I'd like to call this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to order. Eileen, would you like to read the opening statement, please?
Yes, I would. Planning Board meeting Thursday, October 18th, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2015, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Boyle?
Present.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Russo's been excused. Mr. Schneider's been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett's been excused. Deputy Mayor Nacastro? I have not heard from. Mayor Berger?
Present.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then for a moment of silence for our emergency responders and one of our heroes with us tonight. And with that, you can do the pledge.
... to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, excuse me. We have the regular meeting of August 2nd, 2018. Eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, can I have, well, ladies and gentlemen, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 2nd, 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence, Eileen?
Yes, I have a ton of correspondence. First one is an email from Salvatore Alfieri. He's the attorney for Elon Associates. They're on the agenda tonight for an extension of time. He said that he's unfortunately, he's not going to be able to make it tonight, and he asked if I could just reschedule it. There's no notice involved, so we're going to put it off until another meeting, but just so you know.
Okay.
The next item is from Ken Pape. He's the attorney for Lanes Pond Developers. He wanted to advise us that they're going to modify the plans to reduce the number of lots from four lots to three lots and change the characterization of the subdivision from a major to a minor. So they're going to file these plans within the next 14 days. He asked that this application currently scheduled for this evening be adjourned to accommodate the revised filing, and he asked that the adjourn date be no earlier than December 2018 to accommodate this request. And he also granted an extension of time through December 31st, 2018. And he was carried to tonight with a new notice, so he has to notice either way.
Right.
So we don't have to carry him to a date specific since he's re-noticing. So, Eileen, you can just take care of that, Mr. Pape.
Yes. The next item is from Jerry Sonnenblick, who also has an application on the agenda for this evening. That's Honor Boulevard LLC, Tek Warehouse LLC. And unfortunately, they could not make this evening's either, so he's going to come up with a date and we'll notice for it. And he also extended the time for the board to December 31st, 2018.
Okay. Ron, do you want to make the respective announcements?
Oh, there's no announcements to make because they're all re-noticing.
Okay.
So there's, it's, we're not carrying it without further notice. It'll be another formal notice published and given to property owners.
Okay. Let me, just for the public, if anyone's here for case number SD 2984, Lanes Pond Developers LLC, or case number SD 2981, Honor Boulevard LLC, Tek Warehouse LLC, both of those applications will not be heard tonight, and they will be sending out new notices, so we do not know when those applications will be heard again. But if you receive the notice, you will receive another notice, a new notice. Anything else?
Yes, we also have a couple of ordinances that we have to deal with. One is ordinance number O-18-34 dealing with decks, and it was actually introduced by the council on September 25th and adopted on October 9th. We were supposed to discuss it at our last meeting, but because it was rescheduled, we never got the chance. But the clerk asked if we would still kindly comment on it so she can leave it in her file with this ordinance.
Okay.
And that was sent to all the members by email.
Yep.
So she wants us to take a formal action to, okay. They're asking us post-adoption to determine whether that ordinance is substantially consistent with the municipal master plan.
Okay, I was gonna go through that when we do all the resolutions.
Whenever you'd like.
Okay. And then there's one other ordinance that was actually introduced, I believe, on October 9th. This one is regarding the SED zone, and they have added a use for health club facilities and fitness centers. This one, we do have some time. It was supposed to be adopted at, on the October 23rd council meeting, but that has been postponed, so now their next meeting's not until November. So we can either discuss it tonight and act on it, or you can do it at the next meeting.
What's the council meeting in November?
I believe it's the 20th.
Oh, okay.
So we have time.
All right, if the board doesn't have an objection, I'd like to push ordinance O-18-32 to our November...
Thirty-five.
I'm sorry. Thirty-five.
It's not on your, it's new correspondence. It's not on your agenda.
Okay. But we're going to act on 32 tonight also?
Thirty-two and thirty-one, we have resolutions for. We have to act on.
All right, but if the board doesn't have an objection, I'd like to push the action on ordinance O-18-35 to the November 8th meeting.
November 1st.
November 1st meeting. I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
I know what you mean. Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Kuzer?
Yep.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll move that to October 1st.
November 1st.
Okay, that's it. You done with correspondence? Okay, we're going to go now to resolutions. Case number SP 830-A3, Northeast Remsco. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Eileen, please indicate. Mr. Nacastro just joined us?
I have to do, 7:12. Thank you.
Thank you. Eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Mayor Berger, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to... Make the motion.
Memorialize the revolution.
Long day, huh?
Yeah. It's going to be longer tomorrow.
I'll second that on.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is ordinance number O-18-31, an ordinance of Township of Howell, amending Chapter 188, Article 3, Section 188-11, entitled Accessory Buildings of the Revised General Ordinances of Township of Howell. It's a, we're looking for a motion that it is substantially compliant with the master plan.
Did you...
Do I, eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion on the resolution.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
You?
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is a resolution to memorialize ordinance O-18-32. It's an ordinance of Township of Howell, amending Chapter 188, Attachment 5, Land Use Application Checklist. So we're looking for a resolution that is substantially compliant or consistent with the township master plan. Eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is case number SP 1027, 41 Randolph LLC. It's a resolution memorializing the granting of preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance relief. Eligible voters, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, and Mr. Seaman.
Make a motion to memorialize.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next resolution is case number SD 2978, Edward and Lloyd's McManey, McNamee. It's a resolution granting preliminary major subdivision approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Last one is case number SP 1046, Bank of America. It's a resolution memorializing granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kuzer, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to memorialize.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first order of business, new business. It's a review of submission waivers before the board. Case number SD 2985, Rosemary Byrd. It's an application for minor subdivision with ancillary bulk variance relief. Application of Rosemary Byrd as applicant and Stanley D. Domin and Rosemary Byrd as owner seeking minor subdivision approval with ancillary bulk variance relief to re-subdivide the existing three lots into three new lots by reducing the size of lots 70.01 and 70.02 and conveying additional area to existing lot 70.03 and vacating the buffer easement on lots 70.02 and 70.03 with no additional site improvements on premises known as Block 42, lots 70.01, 70 point, I think that should be 02?
Yes, it should. It's a typo, sorry.
Yeah, 70.02 and 70.03, 501, 503, and 505, Newton's Corner Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Cohen, attorney for the applicant Rosemary Byrd. I have conferred with your engineer. I believe we're in agreement on the requested waivers with the exception of 52, which my client's going to provide.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, the waivers start on the top of page 4A through F. As was just indicated by Mr. Cohen, the applicant has agreed to supply item F. As it relates to A to E, because there are no site improvements proposed at this time, it's really a reconfiguration of three lots which were previously before this board. I take no exception to the granting of those waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board?
No. What will be the size of each lot after this configuration?
Well, that'll be part of this substantive application. Tonight is just the submission waivers. They'll be coming back, and they'll put on the case, and we can go through all that stuff.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no questions from the board, can I have a motion for granting the submission waiver?
I'll make a motion to... Granting the submission waiver?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next submission waiver is case number SD, excuse me, SD 2980, M&amp;M and G and C Urcolano. It's a preliminary and major subdivision with ancillary bulk variance relief. It's the application of M&amp;M and G and C Urcolano as applicants and owners seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval with ancillary bulk variance relief to subdivide the property into four new lots for single-family dwellings with drywall, drywall systems on premises known as Block 185, Lot 73, 277 Colts Neck Road, which is County Road 35.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Cohen again for the applicant, Eric Olinos. Again, the requests are listed on pages 4 and 5 of CME's review letter of October 3rd. I did discuss them with Laura earlier in the day, and I believe we're in agreement again. Checklist item 52 will be submitted, and my engineer will submit the necessary information with regard to checklist item 60.
Ms. Newman?
Can I just swear again for this one? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, that is in fact correct. As it relates to items A through E, I take no exception to the granting of those waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete, but would concur that checklist item F and G should be provided with the application.
Acceptable numbers to come?
Yes.
F and G?
Okay.
You don't have a number?
Oh, 52 and 60.
52 and 60, okay.
Do, does the board have any questions? If not, can I have a motion granting the submission waiver request?
Make a motion to... With the submission waiver request?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, going to our next item is case number SP 1042, 999 Route 33 LLC. This is a preliminary and major, major site plan with ancillary bulk variance. Application of 999 Route 33 LLC as applicant and owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct 13,500, 950 square foot expansion to the existing building and to construct designated areas for new equipment, retail equipment, and repair equipment surrounding by, surrounded by a looping driveway on premises known as Block 183, lots 25.01 and 27.02, 999 Route 33. After the board took jurisdiction on this case on September 6th, this application was carried to October 18th, no further notice.
Ladies and chairman members of the board, Robert F. Munoz, Davis and Eastman, Munoz, Letterman, and Hayon on behalf of the applicant. Chairman, last time we were here, we put off the application to go to DOT, have discussion on consolidation of the lots. We did that. We revised the plans to reflect the new access that DOT had requested us to do as a result of consolidation of lots, and we submitted new plans which have already been looked at by your engineer. And so we did carry out that, and that request to the board from last time we were here.
Okay. So what's your...
I have three witnesses. I have the proprietor of Garden State Bobcat, my engineer, and the architect.
Okay.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Robert Woods, W-O-O-D-S.
Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Would you like to qualify? Mr. Woods?
Mr. Woods is just the owner of the business, but I will ask him some questions about the history of him owning the business and the property. Mr. Woods, are you the originator of Garden State Bobcat?
I am not. My parents started the business in 1983 in Howell, on Route 9.
And so you're the second generation at this location?
Correct, correct.
And how long have you been the owner of, an operator of Garden State Bobcat?
I began to purchase shares of the business from my parents in 2008, and I became majority shareholder in 2013.
And as a result of us being here today, there's obviously going to be an expansion of Garden State Bobcat's facility?
Yes.
And could you tell us how you acquired the property that you're going to expand on?
Sure. I was a, the successful bidder from the allocation of fire commissioners. I believe, safe to say, it was a public bid for the property.
And you acquired it from them, and as a result, you've come forth with this application?
Correct, yes.
All right. So tell us a little bit about Garden State Bobcat. What is the business of Garden State Bobcat that's operated at this location?
We are a compact equipment dealership specializing in earth-moving machinery. We offer sales, rentals, parts, and service.
And what are the general hours of operation?
Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
At this particular location, you do sales, you do rental, and you do, and you do repairs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the proposal for expanding the building is for what purpose?
First, additional outdoor storage, additional parking spaces for employees as well as customers, increasing the indoor capacity for the parts department.
And how many employees do you have at this location?
Currently, we have 22 employees, eight of which are remote. By remote, they are not at the office consistently every day. Those employees consist of two outside sales reps, three upper management, which would consist of myself, two road technicians, and one driver.
Okay. And when you say they're remote, so some of your sales are done by your salesman. They, they put the machine on the truck and, on a trailer, and they take it out, and they might be out for the day demonstrating or something of that nature?
Yes. Ninety percent of the sales occur outside of the office, please.
So your sales are not just people who come to your facility, but also, but you actually go to them?
Correct.
Now, after you have the expansion, what will be the number of employees?
We are looking to add three service technicians.
And those will be onsite?
Correct.
And will there be any increase in the off-site people?
No.
And so how many vehicles, you call them vehicles, what do you call them? Units?
You can call them units.
Okay. How many units do you generally have onsite at any given time?
I took an inventory today because it's our busiest time of the year, so our inventory's the largest this time. New equipment consists of 100 units and 200 attachments. These are attachments that mount on the front end of these units. Used equipment and rental consists of 50 units and 30 attachments, and equipment that is in our shop for service is about 75 units.
Okay. And how is servicing done?
Servicing is done completely indoors by my service technicians. Typically, customers will drop off their equipment when it's in need of maintenance or repairs. If the equipment is red-tagged, meaning it's immobile, we will send a service truck out to winch it up on the truck and then bring it back to our dealership.
And when, and all the servicing is indoors?
Yes.
And will that be so after, after this is constructed?
Yes.
Mr. Woods, I just, I missed it. The six units, what were they? So there was the 100 of the new, new equipment, 75 units in the shop, and there was six units or something else?
50 units, which consists of used equipment and/or rental equipment, along with 30 attachments.
So let's break that down a little bit. In terms of the, in terms of your business, what, what would be a rental unit? Something somebody takes for the day, or is it a longer period of time?
Typically, our average rental's about two weeks.
And are there, and then others are purchases or leases?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of proposed storage, how many units do you propose to store on this site if this application is approved?
The same amount of equipment.
With about the same amount of breakdown?
Yes.
In terms of the number of units?
Yes.
What new amenities will you be providing with the, with the changes to the, to the building?
Stated before, additional indoor space for storage of parts, additional indoor service shop space, indoor wash bay with self-contained water recycling system, additional break room solely for the service technicians, indoor storage for small rental equipment, and additional employee and customer parking.
Is there any fueling that, that occurs onsite?
Yes, we do. It is required that we add fuel to the equipment. It's, when it's delivered to our location, they are delivered empty, so prior to a sale or a rental, we are required to fuel the equipment.
And do you, and are you willing to have a stipulation? There were some discussions in the reports that we have, but you would accept the stipulation that no, no parts of vehicles or disassembled vehicles will be stored outside?
Yes.
Now, there was also in the reports, a point raised regarding compliance with certain conditions of what is normally applied to all applications. In terms of noise, is there any particular noise that, that'll occur at this site?
Just normal operating noise of the equipment when it's used outdoors.
And it's only be in the daytime?
Correct.
Okay. And how about in terms of glare? Do you anticipate there'll be any glare coming from your, from your site?
No.
And do you have any other flammable or hazardous material other than the fuel that we talked about?
We do have hydraulic fluid that was stored indoors.
And what proposals do you have for solid waste and refuse? And what proposals do you have for solid waste and refuse?
Solid waste? We currently have a five-yard container that is removed from the facility weekly as well as, I believe, a single-stream recycling.
Now, the reason, could you give us the reason for this application in terms of how is your business doing at this location?
Business is doing very well. Since I acquired the business from my parents, the business has more than doubled since that time period in 2008. I would say that we're probably near the peak of where the equipment business is. In terms of market size, it's the highest it's ever been.
I have no further questions of Mr. Woods.
Does the board have any questions? I see you have a wash bay. Is that something new, or?
No, we currently have a wash bay.
How is that water, you know, funneled out of the building?
It's a self-contained system, so it's not funneled outside of the building.
The water is recycled and reused?
The water is recycled and reused.
Where's the septic located on the map? I'm just not seeing it.
I don't know. The septic is presently in front of the building?
Can you give me a direction? Like, what's in front of it?
I can-
Okay.
Presently right here.
Okay. Well, just one moment. Is this, we have pre-marked some exhibits. What are you referring to on the board there?
I think we'll make this A-10. It's one of the sheets.
Okay, yeah, let's make this A-10.
Counselor, can you take that whole easel and move it closer to the board here?
I think you will have a color one at your desk, too.
Yeah, it's just the easier when he points.
Yeah.
So can you just describe what A-10 is?
A-10 is sheet one of the-
It's a site plan.
It's colored site plan?
Colorized site plan.
Color rendering.
Wait until the engineer-
I'll just point out, the engineer's going to talk about it in more detail.
Sure, I'll wait.
It's right in this area here. Right in front of the proposed building. It's actually going to be moved. That's why I want to let the engineer talk about it. Okay?
Fair enough.
Can I ask, in the, you said you assumed the business somewhere around 2006, if I remember?
2008.
2008. So in the 10 years, how many spills of gasoline and/or the hydraulic fluid have occurred?
Zero.
You've never had an incident?
No.
Okay. Do you have a safety plan in place that in case there is a incident, that there's a planned action on how it's addressed?
Well, we contain diesel fuel, which is in a dual-wall OSHA-approved tank. We do have hydraulic fluid, which is stored indoors in all sealed containers. We don't carry hydraulic fluid in bulk. I can say that we are inspected every year by the fire department. We've never had any issues before.
Well, my concern is, is that as these vehicles that come in that are needing repair-
Yes.
Okay. I'm concerned about leaking hydraulic fluid. I'm assuming these vehicles come in on trailers, they're being towed on trailers, all right? So what happens if, is there any procedures? All right, I'm understanding that this loop driveway that you're proposing here is basically cross-stone, correct? It's not paved?
It's paved.
It's paved, okay. Well, even with that, when these vehicles come in, what happens if they're leaking hydraulic fluid? What happens if they have a ruptured gas tank that may be still leaking?
Sure. Hydraulic leaks are more common. We put oil bibs underneath the machines as well as speedy jarring.
Do we have curbing on this paved road that if there was some spill, that it didn't just run off the edge of the road into the landscaped area?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that'll be something we'll ask the engineer about.
Although Mr. Woods is intimately knowledgeable of the plan, I think probably those are better questions for the engineer.
So there's a piece of the property here at the end where it looks like it's going to be grass. Is that going to remain grass? You're not going to put anything there? So it's towards, I guess-
I'm sorry, I can't see it.
This section, the green section.
Up the back.
Past the basin, so that's going to remain-
Yeah, it's currently wooded. We don't intend on touching it.
Thank you.
Would you put a stipulation on the record?
Yeah, of course.
Can we just make that a little more precise in identifying the area?
I think it's the area-
If I could, I would say the area that is immediately-
North?
North of the basin.
On this area here.
Okay.
Dark green is the basin. They actually call it the storm water management facility.
The basin.
Storm water management facility?
I.E. basin.
It's what you have to call them now, I think, under the rest.
No, but it's the area north of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah, I see they have parking going in towards the building, but I don't see any bollards. That's something that, good point, you need to have.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to bring up the engineer? Those are probably engineering questions.
Well, I would like to finish with Mr. Woods, and then we'll barrage your engineer with questions. Any other questions from Mr. Woods?
I do not.
I do not.
All right, well, we always have them here if we want to go back. Okay, your show.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I call Adolf Montana, the engineer.
Did you say that out loud? Say it so he can hear you.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Adolf Montana, A-D-O-L-F-M-O-N-T-A-N-A.
Mr. Montana, could you please give the board the benefit of your licensing and professional engineering experience and education?
I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been doing site development for about 20 years, and I've testified in numerous site planning boards and zoning boards.
So your license is current with the New Jersey Professional Engineers Board?
Yes, it is.
And do you have any actions or had any actions against you by that board?
No.
All right. We'll accept Mr. Montana as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Montana, you're going to refer to A-10?
Yes.
Okay, then you're going to need that.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Montana, could you describe for the board the general existing conditions and the property surrounding the subject application?
Yes, I can. The property in question is located on Route 33. It's approximately 4,000 feet.
Mr. Montana, you kind of hold the mic close to your mouth.
Is that better?
That's a lot better, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's approximately 4,000 feet from Brickyard Road. The site in question is 6.9 acres. It's known as Lot 2702, and Lot 25.01 and Block 183 is sewn HD2, which is the use for the site is permitted. And as was mentioned before, the applicant is proposing to install an addition to the building. It's approximately 13,950 square feet, and is shown on the exhibit that was mentioned before that you have in front of you, that was submitted in your package, and is the tan color on the building.
We've marked this one A-10, so you can refer to it as A-10.
Okay. Also, the applicant is proposing to pave the area around the proposed building for new equipment units, as he called it, and also for rental units. The existing site right now, you access to an existing driveway. It's located here on the east side. That's in-and-out one driveway. We're proposing to modify the existing driveway as commented by New Jersey DOT. We're going to make the existing driveway entrance only, and we're proposing another driveway on the west side of the property for exiting the site only.
And will the island that presently exists on the access, the present access be removed?
That's correct. So we're also proposing a loop road going around the property. As you can see, that's the darker gray going all the way around that connects both driveways. Entire site will be fenced using an eight-foot-high chain-link fence. We're seeking a waiver on that from your current ordinance.
There's no barbed wire on that.
No, there's not.
Could you be specific as to where the fence is going to be placed?
It's pretty much on the perimeter. It follows the landscaping around, all the way right around here, as for security purposes. Mr. Woods, I've had a lot of, you know, break-ins into the site, so we want to make sure that we keep the equipment safe.
And there will be gates as you come in?
Correct. There'll be two gates, right, as shown on the plan. It's right here at the, I guess, at the northeast corner of the proposed building, that there's going to be one gate, and then at the exit driveway, there'll be another gate at that We're also proposing an additional 19 spaces, the 18-by-9. As Mr. Wood mentioned, there's, right now, there's 20 existing parking spaces. Those are going to be for the employees only. The new 19 additional spaces will be for the customers as they come in. The proposed grading for the site, we pretty much maintain the drainage patterns, so it drains pretty much from west to east, so that's going to be maintained. In terms of stormwater management, we're proposing a series of inlets and HDP piping that'll collect all the surface runoff from the site and will be piped towards the stormwater management facility, which is detention basin. Based on the, what do you call, the disturbance on the site, we're triggering the stormwater management criteria by New Jersey DEP. We're meeting the water quality and the water quantity criteria. We're seeking a waiver on the recharge component based on the soil locks that we did onsite. We didn't get the percolation, so we can't do any recharge. For water quality, we're proposing to install two contact water quality devices with an association with the detention basin. We're going to treat approximately 80% all towards suspended solids. For water quantity, we're reducing the two, the 10 and the 100-year storm by 50, 75, and 80% as required by the state. We're proposing to light the site. As Mr. Wood mentioned before, we want to make sure that there's plenty of light, so there's, you know, the security issue. We don't want to make people, you know, think that they can come in over the fence and try and steal some equipment. We're proposing 19 light fixtures that mounted at 24 feet in height, and four wall-mounted fixtures throughout the building. Landscaping. In terms of landscaping, we're proposing on the perimeter, the entire site, a series of shrubs and trees to be able to screen, you know, around the property. We're also providing some landscaping in front of Route 33. We have, we're proposing an equipment display area, and there is landscaping around the entire facility. We are seeking a waiver in terms of the landscaping material required between the parking, the proposed parking on the east side and the building. We didn't quite meet the criteria, but on the revised plans, we could add some shrubs because of the projections of the building. We have some space and could add some additional shrubs.
So how short are you? How short are you from the requirement?
I believe that the criteria is you need a tree and two shrubs for every trench basis, maybe on that one, but we're adding approximately 20 shrubs, so we're seeking a waiver on that one.
Well, I understand, but what I'm asking is, you said that, you made it sound like it was sort of a de minimis request, so what I'm asking is, what's the requirement, and then what are you providing? So how many shrubs and trees are you required to provide?
Like I said, I believe it's one tree and two shrubs for every trench basis.
One tree and one shrub.
One tree, one shrub.
For that criteria, we're not meeting, because we don't have space.
Let's assume I was not a very good math student in high school.
Go ahead.
I understand what the formula is. Can you just give me what the total number is?
For the landscaping between the sidewalk and the building?
No, so maybe I can clarify. We're mixing two different standards here. You're required to have foundation plantings around the entire building facade, and I think that's where you are deficient, correct?
Correct, because we don't have space between the parking and the building.
Right. As it relates to providing a tree and a shrub for the parking, you do provide that on the balance of the site, not within the parking area.
That's correct.
So the waiver that you're seeking is the foundation plantings around the building?
That's correct.
And currently, I have your landscape plan up on the big screen, there is no landscaping proposed around the foundation. Is that correct?
We added 20-
I see.
... right there.
Okay.
Like I said, once we had to meet the projection requirement, we went into three feet, so there was an empty space instead of making it concrete. We decided to add some planting material. So it needs a little bit of intent, but not the numbers.
Okay, so if the board members just look up on the screen, where we're providing the trees, there's a call-out right there, 20 cm. That's where the building is providing the shrubs. The balance of the building does not have shrubs around it.
What's the width of that walkway on the east side of the building? Excuse me, I, well, so, Mr., I believe Mr. Boyle brought this up. The, this board, our policy is that when we have head-in parking to a building, we put bollards.
It's now an ordinance requirement.
So, I'm sorry, you're correct. You're correct. So we're looking for bollards.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, it's not that they did not provide bollards. What they did, and again, I'm going to call your attention to the plan, where the first grouping of stalls go against the sidewalk, there's a bumper provided within the parking stall. And then I think where we need to address the need for those is this same area. Now, the board needs to make sure that they feel that that bumper meets the intent of the code, because I believe the sidewalk is flush there, and typically, we would have required curb plus a bollard. But just so we're clear, that's what they've done in this area, and then in this area where, again, the parking abuts curb to sidewalk, there is no bollard provided in there.
All right, so let's take this in two phases, all right? Laura, if you can go to the, yeah. With the wheel stops, are they going to be concrete, or are they going to be the plastic?
Concrete. I don't know. I'm for the bollard. We've standardized on the bollards for all the other applications in the town, and I think we should just stick with the bollard that works best.
Well, again, Mr. Tenenhouse, just to be clear, are ordinance states a bollard or protective device? So if you recommend, I mean, I think what they're offering is this as the protective device. I don't think we need to say bollard everywhere. The board has to review whether or not they feel this is an appropriate protective device. If you choose to say it should be a bollard, that's okay, but I just wanted to make it clear what the ordinance states.
Fair enough.
These protective pieces of concrete, how high are they?
I believe they're six inches. Six inches.
Six inches? Car can drive right over top of that in a heartbeat. That's why we want bollards. So let me pull the board here. Bollards?
Yep, my preference is a bollard.
See me? I don't feel super strongly either way between the wheel stops and the bollards. Mr. Castro.
You know, just remember what part of the building it's at. People are not going to be walking there or going into a glass or anything inside of the building. So I'm good with what they're proposing with the safety measures. We don't want to overkill every project that comes in here with bollards, because it's going to look crazy, Jim. So that's my opinion.
Chief?
I agree with the deputy mayor.
May?
Believe it or not, so do I.
What do you mean, believe it?
Mr. Boyle?
I'll go along with the board.
All right, so the consensus is the wheel stops are adequate. Now, can we move to the other portion of the building?
We can. The only thing I want to recommend, just on those, they'll actually be steeled into the-
Yes, it would.
Okay. So just so you understand, it's a six-inch base, but they're affixed into the ground.
Yeah.
Okay. Area two.
So these spaces right here, would there be any objection to putting wheel stops for those spaces also?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Which spaces are those?
So those are the spaces that are on the east side of the site.
It's the northern, yeah. The nine-
That's the nine spaces.
Nine areas.
Yeah, in front of the expansion. Now, there's no windows along there, is there?
That's the north of the site, you said.
Yeah, it's the northern.
That's a hairy question. It looks like there's four windows.
You can drive right through the window.
Evil, can you?
Well, they just drove through CVS.
Yes, there are windows in that location. That's where the occupancy- But they're, they're up high.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They're up high, they're on the second floor.
They don't come all the way down to the ground level?
No, they do not. They're about-
They're all the way up here.
15 feet off the curb.
Okay.
That area is for part storage, so I don't intend on putting windows at the level.
They're brick foundation there also.
I think the-
Pretty significant height in brick.
Yeah, I think that the purpose of the bollards was for building protection as well, so if the building could be made of such that it can withstand the traffic impact, somebody hitting the gas in the wrong way, then that's been acceptable as well.
That's correct.
And it's, the architects got a, yeah. Yeah, sometimes they have to put a little something extra in their wall to, you know, make it stop, but that's okay, too. extra in their wall to, you know, make it stop, but that's okay too.
I'm glad Mr. Wood came back up. I just wanted to ask a question. So you have these nine-by-18s, which are fine for parking cars, passenger cars, but I would assume that you have contractors, masons, who may be coming to, you know, shop for a new Bobcat or something like that?
Correct.
Guys may come in dump trucks. Where do you park those vehicles?
Well, we're proposing an unloading and loading area right behind, at this location. So contractors that come in with a big, big, you know, truck, trucks, and they'll pull up to the back of the facility and unload or unload whatever you need.
Could we maybe put a little striping down, so it's a little more organized than just random?
There is striping, it doesn't show in the exhibit that I have, but it's shown on the site plan on sheet C4. That holds every stripe will be for unloading and unloading.
In addition to the striping, we intend on putting wayfinding signs as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm sorry, maybe I'm dense here, but I'm looking at C4 site plan drawing, as you said, and I see that there's spaces that are marked just to the north of the building, and the rest of the area that you pointed to is, it's just hatched.
Correct, that's what, that's actually striping.
Okay, so you don't show a striping plan that shows the striping?
That hatching is the striping.
That hatching is the striping.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, you're not really striping the stall for a truck.
Like Mr. Wood just testified, he's going to put.
Wayfinding signs and, and stripe the spots as well. It'll be designated as an offloading area.
All right, so then just to clarify, if the board were to act favorably, you'd be able to provide a plan which delineated the parking stall striping in that area?
That's correct.
In addition to the hatch?
Correct.
Well, not in addition, but in absence of.
You need a hatch.
Okay, fine. I'm sorry, we interrupted your testimony.
No, that was pretty much up to the end. The lighting, the stormwater, the grading.
I have a few, I have a few other questions. We had a question about the septic system, could you explain that?
Yes, the water health, public water health base of the new square footage of the building is requiring a larger system, so we are, the existing, the existing septic tank is approximately located by the construction, and we're proposing to add a new septic system for, for the new building square footage.
And where's the septic field going to go?
I think Laura's trying to pull it up right there, it's better if it comes out on the screen.
That's the new system.
So if the area is approximately 32 by 56, the disposable field, we're proposing a septic tank, except approximately 1,600 gallons, that goes right into a distribution block and to the perforated 4-inch PVC pipe.
Despite the fact that I explained to the county health board that we were not going to have many new employees, we might have a couple, they said they do it based upon square footage, so we had to move and expand the septic system.
Is that going to be a raised berm over?
It's going to be a soil replacement.
Is there any floor drains in the new portion of the building that connect to the septic?
Floor drain, no.
No.
So strictly sanitary discharge?
Correct.
So your display area is basically going to sit on top of the septic system?
No, the display area is further west.
The display area will be north of the fence.
Okay. I, I just, I noticed one thing. Laura, can you go to the, the drive aisle on the east side of the site? So if I'm understanding your testimony, you're trying to create a loop road?
Correct.
All right. For this portion that's directly to the east by the, the parking spaces, you're still showing two-way traffic, all right? And I'm understanding from what you said, DOT is mandating an entrance in and a separate exit out.
That's, that's correct. The reason why I did that, if you, Laura, if you bend a little bit to the right, for example, if somebody needed to travel from the proposed parking spaces to the existing parking spaces, they have the ability to go back and forth, but as you can see, we propose to install a do-not-enter sign right allocation, which tells the driver that you're not allowed to leave that, in that direction, and we also install a series of signage, the S1, that says exit to the side, which has, you'd have to go all the way around the loop road.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Montana?
Could you describe just a little more detail about the, how the washwater is going to be recycled, disposed of, contained?
Mr. Wood's getting to talk about.
And the simple reason I ask that is, it's, it's very, it, there's an emerging contaminant in the state of New Jersey, commonly referred to as PFOS, and it's common with car washes, and they're finding it all over the state of New Jersey. So when I, when I hear car wash, they're, they're actually measuring this stuff in parts per trillion right now. They're finding it a lot in Howell. So how, how are you going to go, you wash these things, it's 100% contained?
Yes.
And what do you do with it after that?
So we drive the equipment into the wash bay, and there are grates on the bottom of the, the floor. So we wash the equipment, grease, hydraulic fluid, dirt often at times, and the water filters down to the bottom of the sump or, or pit, and it is pumped up to a waste water recycling system. This particular system that we have now, I'm not an expert, but it almost electrifies the water, and it goes through a series of different fats or tubs, and then it's recycled. So the water that we're spraying out of the pressure washer comes from the wastewater system.
Do you have a point where the particles, usually that's like by way of settlement? So at some point, does the tank, the tanks need to be cleaned or the sedimentation removed?
Yeah, we have them pumped by Safety Clean every three months, because what happens is it'll turn the sludge because of the amount of dirt that comes off the machines.
So you don't dispose of it, you have a company that comes in?
Correct.
Without, it's a constant recirculation?
Yes.
Okay, nothing escapes to the environment?
No. And it's all indoors.
And is there any hydraulic lifts in the addition?
No. All the equipment is repaired from above, not below, like a vehicle.
Yes, show him the standard.
I just have one question in regards to the lighting plan in C7, please. Laura, are you able to please bring up C7? There's a note on the drawing about the security lighting timers and, and/or as discussed by the town. I don't personally have any say in it, but since it's asking for town input, I figured we'd give it to them. Or at least, could you provide some testimony as to what you meant by that?
I believe you still, we can talk about that, your intention is to keep the lighting hot from dusk till dawn, right?
Correct.
That's because of security concerns?
Yeah, it's important, because we are going to probably mount security cameras on every pole as well, because we have a lot of theft, and it always occurs in the dark places where we can't capture them on camera. The equipment's very expensive, I mean, when I say 100 units are going to be stored in the yard, it's $6,000 worth of equipment. We typically have about $100,000 worth of theft per year.
How much?
Hundred thousand.
Want to be your insurance company? Chief is going to send more patrols up there, don't worry, chief.
They do an excellent job, they, they do.
It's just, it's easy to lift.
Yeah, it's very, I mean, it currently is very dark, so it's quite easy for someone to come in and steal.
What the thief doesn't know is that they have GPS on those machines, so you're going to find them and you're going to track them.
They do, they now do.
I know, I know.
Some of the stories, some of the stories you can tell is true.
Without getting into details, you're, you're expanding that excellent security system that you already have in there?
Yes.
That you've had for a long time.
Yeah. We currently only have one pantilt zoom camera, we're going to probably do about 10.
You want to keep that confidential?
Off the record.
Do you want to go through the engineer's letter? Yes, that was going to be the next thing I was going to suggest.
You don't want to go through any of them?
Sure. As long as you can, you want to read it, or I read it, whichever you'd like to do.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of touch upon the relief associated with the application, one of which was already touched upon, and that's an existing condition. We spoke about the proposed with the foundation, but that's the one tree and one shrub for every 10 parking spaces. Currently, there's nothing on-site with the 20 existing parking stalls. They have provided it to supplement for what they are doing with the additional parking area in an attempt to satisfy that requirement, but in the existing condition, that did not comply. The next item deals with the signage associated with the property, but Mr. Munoz, you can confirm that there was a sign permit issued for this parcel?
That's correct, I submitted that to the board. It had been, there were two signs approved for this site. The site, the existing sign was, was, the existing signs were approved several years ago when Mr. Wood's father came in to redo the, the present site.
And then just touching upon the design waivers that have been requested, as was testified by the engineer, there is an eight-foot changeling fence that is located in a portion of the front yard setback. I believe they testified that this was for security purposes, but that is relief. I know Mr. Tenonhouse just touched upon, and we talked about the lighting. This is an instance where our ordinance has the minimum of .3, a maximum of .5. We talk about this a lot on applications. Their lighting levels vary on the site, ranging from an average of .5 to 2.2 foot candles on the site. There is no spillage, can you confirm that, please?
Yes, there's no spillage on the front end.
E is the foundation plantings, I believe we heard testimony on that item. The next item talks about the main driveway through the site should be 30 feet wide. You have a 24-foot wide loop circulation. I think it's important to note that a large portion of this is actually a one-way drive aisle. Have you received comments from our fire bureau?
They recommended 30 feet just on the portion of the parking spaces here, but as we talked before, 24 should be more than adequate to satisfy the requirement.
Do we have anything in writing?
Here's their. Like scrolls, so it's low. So you indicated you, you reviewed the 24-foot wide aisle with the parking, and the fire bureau was okay with that?
No, not, not, I did not talk to the fire bureau, I'm just stating what the comment is. The comment says recommend for two-way traffic.
So in the area where it's 24 feet, where you do have two-way traffic, can you widen that to comply with the 30-foot requirement? Similar to what you have here, where I think, I believe it is 30 feet, and then you kind of throat it down? Can you throat it down as it becomes a one-way aisle?
We can, we can extend to six feet and then taper back in right before the gate.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, while I defer to the board, I think that that would be more in, in keeping with the fire bureau's recommendations.
I agree. What's our agreement on that?
Nope.
I agree, that's, that's acceptable, yes.
So you're going to comply with the recommendations, it'll be 30 feet for the two-way traffic?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next item goes to our parking stall length with a circulation aisle, so we have 18-foot wide parking with 24 feet, however, that will now be widened to 30 feet. With that widened to 30 feet, I have no exception to an 18-foot wide stall.
18-foot deep?
That's correct.
Yeah, you said wide.
I said wide. Long day for me too, apparently.
Tell it around.
As it relates to the next item, I believe this was also testified to, as the board's aware, the stormwater regs require three prongs, quality, quantity, and recharge. The applicant has provided soils information to demonstrate that this site is not suitable for, to meet the recharge requirements, and I even made them go back and test additional areas, which they did do, and I, I can confirm that based upon the information supplied, it is not suitable for recharge.
What, do we have an underlying clay layer?
I, I don't know that there was underlying clay, it was a high-water table, as I recall.
No, just the soil, the water wasn't going anywhere, because there's, there's a layer that water doesn't pass through.
But you don't recall what soil it was?
I'm not a geotechnical engineer, I just, I read the report and.
Does the board have any issues with that? I mean, it really sounds like it's an existing condition that the applicant does not have any ability to mitigate. I, I think we're okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, which we did not hear testimony on, is the requirement of sidewalk, and whether or not the board would want to see sidewalk along the property frontage?
I don't think so.
Not in that area.
The consensus is no sidewalk.
The next item deals with the location of the access driveway, should be 50 feet from a side or rear property line. It says a budding or residential use. This was flagged, however, lot 27.03 no longer contains a residential use, is that correct?
Correct.
So with that, I don't believe that relief is, is necessary.
Well, these access points are also dictated by DOT, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
As it relates to the next item, parking lots will be exposed from public view surrounded by a minimum three-foot-high visually impervious screen hedge or wall. There is no screening provided in that nature along the Route 33 corridor. The next item.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Chief, would you prefer not to have screenings so that you can see?
Correct, the security purposes are required.
Okay, so.
And that was going to lead me to the next one, which is very similar. It says a five-foot strip measured along the right-of-way line shall be suitably landscaped, and again, I think the same comment kind of in lies, that this may not be an area appropriate to screen that close to the road.
Right, but can we put some low bushes, just so we have some vegetation?
We can, I believe their landscape plan.
We do have some landscaping material provided along the, you know, by the display area.
But it's all low? It's low?
That's correct.
Okay.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is the architectural standard, where we can't have a blank wall or uninterrupted space exceeding 50 feet in length without an articulation or a projection or depth, and roofline offset, so along the existing building facade, there are no projections or recesses. The proposed building does comply with that standard, and also, there was a, there's a flat roof, and is that consistent on the proposed building or strictly on the existing building?
I will let the architect discuss that parameter.
The next item deals with signs, so you will be adding building mounting sign, signage with the application?
Yes, there, I believe there's three signs on the building. The architect will, will testify about the type of sign as well.
How about the parking requirements for the site? We, we asked how you calculated them on and whether or not it should be based upon showroom. You have 32 spaces provided for the site, do you feel that that is appropriate for this type of use?
That's correct. We, we used the ordinance, which states for the showroom and for, for the offices, we used one stall for 300 square feet for the warehouse areas, we used one and 5,000, that's how we've arrived to 32, and we're providing 39, which is more than adequate.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
What normally do you have in the way of people that come to your existing establishment right now? Not, not employees, I'm talking about customers.
How many customers are at the location at any given point in time?
Yeah.
Two.
Okay.
And it's typically for parts that they're usually picking them up and they're exiting quickly.
Okay. In fact, most of the parking at the present time is supplied by that front parking lot, is it not?
Correct.
And that's all going to be employee parking now?
No, I'm sorry, employee parking will be closest to Route 33. The parking on the east side of. The parking on the side of the building, which is the east side, is from a customer.
The present-time customers park in that front lot.
Correct, yes.
I think this one's for Mr. Wood, but just trying to be in keeping with the report. The display area that you have, there's no issue for concern that any of this equipment would encroach onto Route 9? Like, if you had any arms on the equipment or anything of that nature?
Route 33.
A 33, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all the equipment will be contained in that, in that area.
Given this is one way, I do believe that it shouldn't have an issue for a truck to circulate the site, but would you provide a truck circulation template plan?
I would think sheet C.
And does that show access at the refuse area?
No, that just shows a W B, that being going around the site. But for the refuse area, it'll be the same, the same idea. They'll come in, pick up the trash, back out, and go out.
We have very minor in item five of our report, four little technical comments. Do you agree to comply with those?
Yes, rule of.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, let me just, I see. See refers to mention that some lighting, not enough lighting at the existing driveway. Right now, it's an existing condition, and we're trying to figure out if we're more concerned with spillage or we're more concerned with illuminating intersection, because that, that goes, it goes against.
What spillage are you concerned about? That onto Route 33, or that onto the woods of your, of the neighboring property?
Yeah, to Route 33.
I don't.
We're supposed to have zero at the property, but you requested for additional lighting.
Chief, I don't see any downfall to having some light spilling onto Route 33, do you?
I think it'd be a safer condition to have the intersection lit, because it is where traffic would turn in.
Agreed.
We'll add another light fixture.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know I kinda hopped through the report. I know they still have their architect, who I believe would talk about the building and the signage, but I think that covers our report as it relates to engineering.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Is there still a well on this property?
Yes, sir.
What's the difference, distance between the well and the septic bed?
It's about 75 feet.
Does that comply with the minimum requirements?
My board of health did not have an issue with the location.
Your outside display area, are you gonna have vehicles there all night long? And are the, and if you do, how are you gonna secure that area?
The only vehicle that is left overnight is a 55,000-pound flatbed truck. All the other company-owned vehicles are taken home by the employees.
Okay.
It will be parked in the designated offloading area at night.
So, the vehicles that are in the display area will be secured?
I'm sorry?
So the vehicles that are in this area with that.
I'm sorry, I think I'm referencing a different area.
I just wanted to clarify.
When you say vehicles, trucks, what we use the word units.
Oh, I'm sorry, good guy. The units that are out front by the road?
They're just plain units, yeah.
Yeah, they're disabled, so they cannot be started.
So you're not worried about people coming in and stealing anything off of them?
No.
You have them there now, correct?
Yeah, we have them there now.
Yep.
They go through great lengths to get into our yard to seal the equipment, not the equipment that's out front.
They pulling in and out of your place on Route 33 is a nightmare.
I'm in that on the state for not expanding 33.
Okay, do we have any other questions of Mr. Montana?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question, and I think it's more for Mr. Wood. That is, or Mr. Woods, I'm sorry.
None of them.
The shed on the site, what is that? That's gonna be relocated on your site currently, encroaches, which I think is better, but what is that used for?
That will be the indoor storage for rental equipment.
Okay, that was all, that was the additional question.
I just have one quick question to go off of that one.
The orientation of the shed to get access to it? Could you just provide some testimony about which side has the doors and would provide the access?
Yeah, the door will be closest to the building.
To the building, okay. All right, thank you. Just wanna make sure it didn't interfere with the loading and unloading area. Thank you.
Okay. I like to open up the testimony, Mr. Montana, for questions from the public. So, does anyone have questions they would like to ask the engineer on this application? Yeah, really. Seeing none, we'll close that. Mr. Munoz, if you wanna bring up your architect?
Yes. Mr. Wright?
Can you, can you tap that mic? Is it, yeah.
The light is on, but.
It may have gone out.
I was just gonna say that.
Do we have a replacement?
Scary.
It does look like the battery's low.
When we start thinking alike, that's a problem.
Okay, sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, can you just get closer to the mic, and state and spell your name for the record?
Come closer, over here, so they get you a mic. You don't have to pick it up.
That is a mic on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, just stand near it, you don't have to touch it.
I like it.
Hi, my name is Harry Wright. H A R R Y W R I G H T.
Okay.
Wright, could you give the board the benefit of your educational background?
I have a bachelor of architecture, and I've been practicing for 28 years. This is my second planning board hearing.
And you licensed in the state of New Jersey to practice architecture?
I am.
And are you, I'm gonna take one of the chairman's questions. Have you have any complaints against you, or any disciplinary actions pending?
No, I have not.
And his license is current, correct?
Your license is current?
My license is current.
We'll accept him, Mr. Wright, as expert in architecture.
Mr. Wright, could you, are you gonna use those? These exhibits are actually in your, are already marked.
Okay, which numbers are they?
I'll get that for you. I think they are A9.
A9 is A101?
Yes, A101, it's actually three sheets, I believe. A101, A102, and A201.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Wright, would you describe for the board what the proposal is with respect to the expansion of the, of the floor plan, and what it's being used, and how it's being organized and used?
On the exhibit A101, you can see the shaded areas, existing building as it stands today. And in order to get additional parts warehouse, we expanded the building to the north. And in the corner is the wash bay that was talked about. And that gives them a probably 400% increase in part space. And in the bay above is the service bay in addition.
And how will the service bay be accessed?
There are three large overhead doors from the end. You can drive straight in, and then from the west side, there's two entrances.
And in terms of when a customer comes to this facility once it's completed, where would a customer enter, and where would that customer be serviced?
The main, the customers would enter on this side, on the east side, either for parts, rentals, or for service. And there'd be a main showroom there.
And that's adjacent to the parking that we've been describing before?
Correct.
And then in terms of the, the elements of the exterior elements of the proposal, did you have some elevations there? I think there are, could you go through each of the elevations?
Is this something that's been marked as well?
It's the same sheets that we talked about.
Same sheet, okay.
It's A201.
We're looking at A201 right now.
This shows all, all the elevations around the perimeter of the building.
Why don't you go over each one?
The front building that, the front side that faces 33? So the existing building is here, and then step back further is the shop area. We incorporated materials that were already in use on the building. Metal siding, vertical metal siding, split face block for base course. And we introduced some metal panels to break up the expanse of the wall length to meet the 50-foot ordinance.
Now, this elevation, are there two signs?
There are two signs. One is set back, and the other was actually an existing sign that we relocated higher up on the, on the new facade, or on the existing facade.
Okay, so I'm the, trying to get oriented. On this, I'm just gonna use a general description. On the side of the building, would you describe the side of the building where the people would enter and exit, the customers?
So, on that side, it's predominantly the, an existing building. Then it was, we added some storefront glass to open it up to the business area. And there's some, there's a showroom entrance, some man doors, and a large set of doors to bring equipment into the showroom, in and out of the showroom for display.
Okay, am I continuing along that side?
Then we, from that point north is the warehouse. We stepped the facade back again to meet, to meet the intent of the ordinance for the length of uninterrupted wall. And that completes that side of the building.
Then the rear, the opposite of the Route 33, what, which elevation is that?
This elevation number two.
What types of materials are being utilized there?
Same materials, vertical metal siding. We have, we continued the split face block base. And it's broken up by a large element. This, in this case, that's a split face block. And we have the different overhead doors that also give some articulation to the facade.
And the side that faces the storage yard?
Side that faces the storage yard, we continue around. We have, again, elements that project forward to meet the ordinance. We have articulations, we have high windows to allow daylight into the shop, and we have the overhead doors and various man doors, other articulations along the facade.
Couple of questions came up earlier. In terms of the roofing, is the roof flat?
No, it is not. All the roofs are sloped, that they're very gentle slope, probably 1 and 12.
All right, and was there any other sign, any other building signs other than the two we talked about? Is there a third sign?
We have a third sign above the entrance to the showroom. Just announcing your entrance.
How much more detail the board wants on the building?
Any proposed rooftop equipment? Is there any proposed rooftop?
Any equipment on the rooftop?
Uh, no, not at this time.
What do you mean, not at this time?
So where are the mechanicals located?
They would be, we have, the design hasn't progressed that far, but they would either be pad-mounted, or they would end up on the roof.
Well, then you can't say in answer to the question, no, when you anticipate that you may very well put the mechanicals on the roof. I mean, that was sort of what the question was asking. So, I mean, is it, you don't know at this point, I guess?
Yeah, I don't know at this point.
I guess what we'll have to do is maybe come back if we decide to put them on the roof?
Well, let me just ask, Laura, is there any regulation that would be, or any ordinance requirement that would be impacted?
There is not, but typically, when the board sees them on the roof and shielded, when they're on the ground, that's when they tend to be a little bit more problematic.
So, the preference of the board is to put them on the roof and shield them?
Yes.
Okay. So can we then come back with that plan, submit it to your professionals, and get their input? And then if they think we need to bring it to the board, we'll be right?
I don't think we have, as long as it's properly screened and it's not able to be seen, I don't think there's any need to come back to the board.
Okay, so that'll be.
I would, I would like to, I would like to state that if they do choose some type of ground mount, that.
Well, they're not. I think they're stipulating it's gonna be on the roof and shielded, subject to the review and approval of the board engineer.
Otherwise, we'll, we'll have to come back for them.
Mr. Coase, you okay with that?
Yep.
It's time, House.
Yes.
See me?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is there any other hanging architectural question?
No, I mean, the only thing I would note for the record, and I do this because we spend a lot of time on architecture, given the use of this building and what it's gonna be for, I commend the applicant for actually looking at our ordinance and coming in with something that complied. We spend a lot of time, particularly with warehouse uses, or showrooms of this nature, not that we see showrooms open, but we do see warehouse or industrial, where we're not getting the facade treatments that we like to see. So I do commend the applicant for looking at that and proceeding that way.
Well, I wanted to say something a little similar. I mean, I think the plan is, it's a beautiful plan for what's gonna be inside the building.
Thank you.
I really appreciate all of the greenery there. And the look of the new building is, is very nice.
And thank you for keeping the business in hell.
Very welcome.
Does board have any other questions of Mr. Wright? Okay, at this time, I'd like to clear my throat and open the, open the testimony up to the public. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions of Mr. Wright, please do so. I don't wanna cause a stampede here, so.
If they line up single file, we'll be okay.
I am going to close this portion of Mr. Wright's testimony. I'm also going to then, if anyone would like to come up and make any statement regarding this application, please do so. Seeing that, I will close the public portion of the testimony. Mr. Munoz, would you like to do a summary?
Mr. Chairman, I think we've worked with your professionals to try and come up as close as we can with the existing facility. I was going to say the same thing, I think, having, I used to represent Mr. Woods' father. I've been going to this facility myself for a long time. It's a substantial upgrade to what has been there for a long time. I think he's trying to keep the, a business and expand the business in hell, and he's trying to be a good neighbor, and, but also to try and have something that's a little bit more practical for him too.
Hey, like that?
Did a nice job with that, I'll make a motion to approve application, and help me out, what's the number? SP 1042.
I'll second.
With all the stipulations.
As noted.
Got it.
I'll second.
We're granting him preliminary final.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
So, deputy mayor, motion, mayor seconded?
Rocco?
Yep, please.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor DeCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna beg the board's indulgence for a couple minutes. Mr. Tannenhouse and I have had some discussions.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I just need, just need me five minutes of your time. Yeah, you make it quick. So, I know.
Is that your leisurely reading?
Yeah, my leisurely.
Yeah, my leisurely reading.
Could you make it a little smaller next time?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so lighting comes up a lot, and as Laura pointed out even in this application, you know, our ordinance is really inadequate to, to allow the applicants to provide a decent lighting design and to meet our strict requirements of our ordinance. Uh, I make a recommendation of just following what has already been put into existence. There's, there's guidance from the Illuminating Engineering Society as to what that light should be. And I think that we should look at maybe helping to encourage the council to put together an ordinance that reflects those, those requirements, and then let the applicant provide us the data that says, hey, this is what the IES says is required or is recommended for this area, and this is what I provided. And then we don't have these issues of what's in compliance and what's not. And I just, just so you guys have an idea of what this stuff looks like, I printed, uh, some pages from the book, and essentially, if you look at the different types of, of outdoor lighting recommendations, depending upon the age of that individual in that area, will determine how many luxes. This book uses luxes, and I, and I circled a 10 luxes equals one foot candle. We typically get applications that show their lighting luminance levels in foot candles. So, for example, a financial facility with an indoor walk-up area for observers of, in the age of 25 to 65, would need 20 foot candles in that area. So, I make this recommendation and like some guidance from the board. I'm happy to help put together maybe a model ordinance or work with the professionals to put one together, but like some recommendations from the board on what you guys think.
But let, let me just say this, Brian, because I've been dealing with you for over a year, and you have been persistent on this, and I commend you on that. So, a lot of the recommendations that, as you made as a liaison, uh, to the, to the planning board on the council, um, I did pass this on to Jim Herman.
Okay.
Typically, the council takes a lot of recommendations, probably all the recommendations when it comes to stuff like this, because we're laypeople. We're professionals. So, I did pass on a lot of your recommendations, um, and it's in the queue.
Oh, good.
Unfortunately, lots happens in Howell, and, you know, professionals sometimes take their priority. I assure you that the mayor and I will bring this back up to...
Okay.
Mr. Herman, if CME as our professional wants to add some input with the information Jim Herman, uh, Brian Tannenhouse has just given, please pass it off to, um, Jim Herman, and we'll, uh, we'll get on this rolling. But, Brian, I do want to thank you sincerely. As a, as a member of the planning board, you've been intricate with, your specialty is lighting and, and give us a lot of information, and you have been working on this for a long time, so mayor, please make sure that...
Absolutely.
As a, as a municipal engineer for five other municipalities, I, um, we do recognize the IES. And what it does is it removes the subjectiveness from our ordinance, because again, it's recognizing a, a known standard. So, I would concur with Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yeah, as you can see, they put a lot of thought into it, because it's...
There's all pictures in there.
It's pretty thick.
This is actually a couple of years old, so I'm sure it's even thicker.
Yeah, it's good midnight reading.
On the beach.
Okay. With that said, um, we need to move into executive session.
Before we do that, just one other question, since Mr. Russo is not here. I've had some questions as to whether there is a master plan meeting next week? Does anybody know?
No.
There will not be one.
There will not be.
I'd like to cancel it.
Um, and, and there's one other point I'd like to, one more on record. Currently, we have a meeting scheduled for November 1st, and we also have one for November 15th.
Correct.
All right. Um, I've discussed this with Eileen. I personally am going to be down at the League of Municipality. I'm sure you guys are. It's, it's the last day of the league, but I really don't want to be chasing up here in the afternoon. We've got one application that is currently scheduled, which is Guild Petroleum.
Yes, and I've spoke to Mr. Alfieri to see if he wouldn't mind getting to December 6th. He's going to check with his professionals and get back to me. I don't think it's a problem. I told him usually that night is a problem because we sometimes don't get a call, so he's aware, and he will get back to me.
So, I, I would like to, um, tell the board, I, I would like to cancel the November 15th meeting.
I agree.
Okay. So, if there's an issue, Eileen, please let me know.
I will.
Okay. All right, so, um, we're going to move into executive session.
I need to read the resolution.
Necessary, so Eileen will read it, and then we just need a, a motion in a second, and we'll take a roll call on it.
Executive Session Resolution. Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12, namely litigation, Villages versus Howell Township Planning Board. Now therefore be resolved by the Planning Board of the Township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting, and that the Planning Board will not reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session, and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time.
Hey, we just need a motion to move that.
Can someone motion that, please?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Call it?
Want to call it?
Yeah.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
One second. My bad. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacaster?